Call to order, please. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the November 10th Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes, here.
Colored?
Here.
Mr. Heston?
Here.
Ms. Beckerena?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saratsky?
Here.
And Chairman Lepone.
Here. There are no minutes to go this week, no resolutions. Is there anything, Planning Board business? Anyone that would like to say anything in front of the Planning Board that is not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time to say it. If it's on tonight's agenda, we'll hold that to later. Okay, seeing none. Special Committee reports, none. No business from Florida, which we talked about. Consideration of ordinances, there are none. So that brings up to our first hearing. It will be Duke's Parkway LLC, Levinitis, file 16 PB 10 SRV, TOD 1215 of 16, Block 58.03, Lot 1, formerly known as Block 58, Lot 70, 280 Duke's Parkway East. Advocate seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, sea bulk variance relieved from minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum front yard setback for existing building, minimum side yard setbacks for existing and proposed buildings, minimum buffers for the existing building and parking lot, parking waivers for parking stall size and parking aisle width, and application waivers for providing an environmental impact study, community impact study, and traffic impact study to renovate existing 2,739 square foot building as an office and construct a 2,760 square foot pole barn in the rear of the property for storage and construct 10 parking spaces on property in the I-2 light industrial zoning district. EC reviews of 7/25/16 and 10/24/16 revised plans submitted 10/3/16. This was carried from October 13th of 2016 without further notice. Counselor.
Yes, good evening, John Sullivan.
Mr. Counselor, Sullivan, on behalf of the videographer and the stenographer, speak into the microphone, make yourself comfortable, and I'm assuming the Chair will be doing an ANDORI on a regular basis. Please speak into the mic, remember that we are, you know-
Recording.
Recording for posterity. And before you enter your appearance, Mr. Sullivan, let me also state for the record, Mr. Chairman, that we have received certifications by absent board members, examination of the record, and eligibility to vote. The people who have reviewed the October 13th, 2016, meeting regarding this application, Ms. Forrest, Mr. Peason, yourself, the Chairman, Ms. Beckerena. And Ms. Beckerena has also reviewed the prior September the 8th. So the record indicates that we do have sufficient eligible members to consider this application tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. John Sullivan from the offices of Astola, and Sullivan representing the applicant. As you had pointed out, Mr. Chairman, we were last here on October 13th. At that time, we had submitted a set of revised plans, and essentially what those plans had done was to reduce the overall size of the building, which resulted in a reduction of impervious coverage. We also increased the setback for the new building as far away as we could from the residential neighbors to the east. We were able to preserve two trees from removal. We established a one-way traffic flow on site. We located the dumpster as far away as we could from the residential properties, and we also provided for lighting and repaving of the parking lot. And I believe that we had concluded our presentation, I believe that the public had concluded their comments, and it was suggested at that time that the matter be carried until this evening to allow us to appear before the Environmental Commission and get the Environmental Commission feedback. We were able to do that, and I believe that the Environmental Commission had issued a report dated November the 8th of 2016, and I don't believe that there were really any issues, but they did point out that, of course, we do need to apply to the NJDEP for the flood hazard area permit, which we will do. I do have Mr. Schmidt with me again this evening. He is available to answer any questions or clear up any issues that there may be.
Okay. Mr. White, is there anything that you want to address before anyone else from their revised plans?
The last major thing was the DEP permit.
Okay.
So if DEP has a problem with the plan and they have to revise the plan, it'll be back before this board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's my recollection, and I'll stand corrected, that while we may have closed the public relative to the applicant's witnesses, I don't believe we had closed the public participation relative to members of the public who might have comments regarding the application as a whole.
That's correct. I believe you're correct. So for the application that was submitted, the plans that were changed, yes, we did receive a letter, and Mr. Julian had said that they were, had met, and it was a more informal question and answer period, and you were able to move the building and save some trees, and that they were, at this point, satisfied with the application. Now, there, I was at, just happened to be at the site because I had not had opportunity to go to, and I watched the video, and I had not heard or seen anything as far as when they put the trash enclosure. Was there a floor plan done that to make that sure that that garbage truck can make it in and around that building to pick up that trash enclosure?
It will make it.
Will make it, okay.
You ever speak?
I'm sorry. Yes, it'll make the turning radius.
Can you say your, state your name again for the record?
David Schmidt from DS Engineering.
Okay, and he's also been sworn in.
Mr. Schmidt, remind, you're still under oath.
Under oath. Were there any other changes other than the size of the building and the spot of the building after meeting and revising the plans for the record?
The Board has the most accurate plans in front of them that we submitted.
Okay, for the public's knowledge, is there anything that has changed from last other than the site? If you want to go over, maybe just review one more time what was done on the revised plans?
In the revised plans, we shifted the building away from the Manville properties. It was originally at 20 feet from the property line, has been shifted to 34 feet from the property line. As John has stated, we reduced the building to a smaller sized building. Lot coverage was reduced by 515 feet. Trash enclosure was provided. Lighting was added to meet the lighting ordinance, and the handicap parking in the front of the building is now at the ADA acceptable code. We also are going to resurface the whole pavement in the front. There were, Maskey had comments about exactly what we were going to do, and I added notes to the grading plan citing that the building's going to be power washed, it's going to be repainted. The vegetation that's growing all around is going to be cleaned up. The applicant, as I mentioned before, he's going to regrade the front of the parking lot to make it ADA compliant, then repave the whole area and clean up the building. So that has all been cited on the plans.
Okay.
And the comments that I have from Bill White, I think all I have left is the change of lighting, and I believe I addressed all Mr. Maskey's comments. So I believe the plans are pretty close to being in conformance with the Towns professionals' review memorandums.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board on this application or?
No.
Okay. So at this time, I guess we'll reopen, motion to reopen for public comment on the application as a whole now. This would be the time to make any comments based on testimony you've heard in the past and also this evening. So a motion to open public-
Does it move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if anyone from the public would like to come up? Yes, sir? Please come up. Please state your name and address and speak, and spell your last name, and also talk into the mic.
Thank you. Tom Riley, last name spelled R-E-I-L-L-Y, and it's 1316 Gress Street in Manville.
Thank you. Proceed.
So the first point that I want to make to the Board here is, I'd like to make reference to the report that came in from the Environmental Board that convened a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And in the next to the last paragraph on the first page, I would just like to read it. The applicant needs to verify if the waterway feature noted above is regulated by the NJDEP. And I would like to know whether or not the NJDEP has verified it. And if so, could we see that in writing?
I did speak to the environmentalist today. I also visited the site today. We don't see it as an NJDEP regulated stream, and when you get the LOI, letter of interpretation, they generally will cite at the very end of the permit that the property is subject to a NJDEP delineated stream that exists in the area. That is not in that letter at all. We are submitting for flood hazard permit. It'll be addressed again, and the DEP will have more information to review to see if that is a regulated stream. Again, as I walked it, if there is a repairing buffer, the repairing buffer is going to be encompassed in the wetland area and the wetland buffer area, which is also located in the conservation easement. So even if it is a regulated stream, which I don't think it is, but if it is, the repairing buffer is encompassed in the wetland area and the wetland buffer area, which is also located in a conservation easement. So no matter which way it is, it's all covered in a conservation easement. And that will be documented in the flood hazard permit, so it will be in writing.
Well, so the direct answer to your question is no, that you don't have anything other than a verbal communication with the NJDEP as of this moment. Is that fair?
Verbal is from my inspection. I know what a repairing buffer is.
No, 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 not your inspection, not your opinion. The NJDEP's not only opinion, but what they rule.
They had a chance to look at the plans that we submitted for the LOI. They normally would cite in your LOI permit that you have a regulated stream in your vicinity. It did not cite it, so that is a written document from the DEP.
I understand it's a written document from the DEP, but another Board convened by the Township of Hillsborough has written into their notes that they want to see something from the NJDEP before moving forward, correct me if I'm wrong with that statement?
No, 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 that's not correct. It's encompassed in the flood hazard permit.
The 50-foot riparian zone?
Right. The repairing zone is, the stream is off-site, and determine where repairing zone is-
Well, as we described in the last meeting, the stream goes directly through the site. And we had a very lengthy-
Not our site.
Description, your site.
No, I, excuse me. I visit the site, but there is a culvert at the very end off the property.
Yeah, I understand where the culvert is. It's approximately 10 feet beyond to the south of the property.
Okay.
That's fair. And it's listed as such in a variety of drawings.
Right.
But that's not what was described at the last meeting. What was described at the last meeting was a waterway going through the property.
No, no, that's not what I heard.
Well, that's, that's-
That's, we have-
And that's what this is all about.
One at a time.
We have a survey located, which is up there on the plans, which shows sheet flow. There is no indication of a ditch and a top of bank and a rabid bank on our property whatsoever.
There's no ditch involved. This is just natural. And it's covered now by leaves and by shrubs, and you can't see, especially as dry as it's been this season, what's going on there right now.
Well, I walked the property, all the way to the rear of the property. There's reed grass on the outside of our property, and that is where the stream is located.
When did you walk it, recently?
Today, today.
And there's leaves all over the place. I can tell you because I was raking leaves for the last several days this week.
If I may, rather than have the two of them argue over the issue, the environmental report reads that, or the Environmental Commission report reads that upon opening up the meeting to the public for comment, the following was noted. And the first bullet point is, there is a waterway feature, parentheses, stream, swell or ditch, between the Raritan River and the site. I'm not quite sure who brought that up, I was not at that meeting, but they're not talking about anything on this particular site.
We would like to comment on that.
Hold on, please.
And in either event, this is going to be encompassed within the FHA permit, and will be addressed accordingly by the DEP.
We'd like to comment further on that because we disagree that that is what was described and discussed at the last meeting. And specifically, rather than a north to south boundary, we were talking about an east to west boundary that went right through, that goes right through your property. And that's exactly how the description was.
That can't happen. I mean, you have to have a drainage area. There's no drainage area that supports a ditch going north-south through the property.
It's not, it's not a ditch. There is an additional waterway that is going through the property. And that's exactly what we described, and the environmental people, two or three weeks ago said, or I'm sorry, the Environmental Commission here in Hillsborough said, hey, you're going to have to go back and forth with the NJDEP, this is a stepwise process. And I just want to point all of that out to you in the Planning Board, that there is a discrepancy, in our opinion, in what is written in there. And further, there is a very specific statement in there saying, you got to get something from the NJDEP in order to proceed with this entire process. So I would like to bring that just to your attention.
Chairman, for the purposes of the record, the Environmental Commission report was provided to you by the Commission on the 8th, dated the 8th of November, which I believe you're own possession of.
Correct.
The statement by the Board, by the Commission, in the second to last paragraph reads as follows. "The applicant needs to verify if the waterway feature noted above is regulated by the NJDEP. If the waterway feature is regulated, then a 50-foot riparian zone would likely be required, which may impact the site and need to be included in the FHA permit." Mr. White earlier in the evening indicated that it would need to be a condition, which I concur with, and that if it required additional action, the condition is that if it requires, if there is a change in the plans because of it, the applicant will have to come back to this Board and seek new approval based on the changed condition.
Correct.
So let's not characterize what's not in the document versus what is in the document. For the purpose of the Board's record, you have, before you, you'll have additional testimony or comments from the public, but I'm going to recommend, depending on, at the appropriate time, in conjunction with the Board Engineer, that this be made a condition, and the condition needs to be satisfied prior to any action being taken vis-a-vis developing the property.
Thank you. That's, you said it far more eloquently than I could have.
Don't, don't, it doesn't happen often.
So essentially, the permit is going to be a requirement to make sure it satisfies all the concerns that you just brought up. Do you understand?
Or if it isn't, it's going to be up to DEP to make that call. If DEP doesn't require it-
Then it doesn't have to be.
Then it doesn't happen, and the applicant moves on. And I'm assuming Mr. Sullivan concurs with all of that.
I do.
Okay. Anything else?
Didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, we went to the Hillsborough Engineer a couple of days ago, and I would just like to have an interpretation of the Engineer's drawing.
Is there a date, is there a date on that drawing that you're referring to?
Yes, the date of the drawing itself is 24 January 2005, with a revision approved on 7 January 2008.
Is that the most current plan, Mr. Schmidt?
It's not our plan.
Okay.
No, this is, this is done by Van Cleef.
Okay, so a plan-
Can we read the title block, so we can know what the plan is for?
Give it to Mr. White, sweetie, we can look at it, please.
And then we're going to show Mr. Sullivan.
And so my question-
Hold on one second. We just want to verify.
Mr. Riley, let me explain how this is now going to happen. Mr. White is going to review it, then depending on his comments, it's going to be shown to the applicant's attorney and engineer, and then at that point, after everybody has seen the document that you apparently have seen-
Yeah.
Then whatever you need to ask can then be asked, and everybody playing from the same, you know.
Okay, it's Van Cleef Plan, last revision date, December 10th, 2007. It was for ace copy that was located on Dickerson, basically Lot 2 in Block 58.03. It's basically showing the surrounding site that is off track of this property in question, as well as the pump station at the intersection of Dickerson and Duke's Parkway East. Shows back then there was, what else it shows for this property? This property, it shows the wetland line that basically came from off-site onto the back portion of this property. A little bit larger than the previous one, but then again, it's also a different, this is a newer LOI, so this is more up to date than this was. You know, it started back in 2005.
So it's-
But it has 2000. Is it fair to say that it has a revision that was approved, and what was that date?
2007.
Handwritten, right where your glasses are.
Why would it go off that date? Because it's not the revision block. The revision block here says December 10th, 2007.
I'm just pointing out what's on that, what's on that Engineer's drawing.
This plan was first-
And it's something that we, we didn't come up with this, or let me say it another way, in a positive way, we got this from your office earlier this week.
Well, that's not that the plans are kept in the office.
No, no, no. Let's find out what it is. The Township Engineer here in the Engineering Department is separate and apart from the Board Engineer and his office. It's Mr. Bellinger's office, and they call plans for all kinds of properties within the Township, whether they are before this Board, the Zoning Board, or the Construction Office. So-
More likely this line dates back to 2005, it's already expired.
Well, I think, I think, let's let the applicant take a look at it, and most importantly, his engineer, then Mr. Riley can tell us what the significance of this is, and we can then move to the next step. All right, well, do you see the plan? Do you agree that, what the plan is and what the dating is?
I agree with the plan, agree with the dating, and-
Okay.
You need the microphone, Mr.-
So we need to put that into evidence?
Yes, I see the plan, I see the grading plan that was provided, and I see wetland flags off-site.
Okay. Mr. Riley, do you want this considered by the Board as part of this application?
Yes.
Why don't we mark this P1 for public, because it's not, they don't have objector status. We can have Mr. White indicate for the record exactly what P1 is. Mr. Riley can ask whatever question he wants, but I will indicate that A, the Board hasn't seen this, and B, I'm not so sure that either the Engineer or the applicant's engineer can in and of themselves answer a question related to a 10-year-old plan, but-
What is your question?
So my question is-
Why don't we mark for the record what it is?
P1, it's a single sheet entitled Grading Drainage Soil Erosion and Setback Control for Lot 2 in Block 58.03, Hillsborough Township Somerset County, New Jersey. It is Sheet C-4. Originally dated January 24th, 2005, last revision, December 10th, 2007.
Mr. White, for the purposes of the record, is this a map, engineering map, of the property in question before this Board tonight?
No, it is not. It's for adjacent lot, actually Lot 2, directly adjacent lot.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
So my question is, the lines of demarcation for the wetland here are marked, and they, and they're marked on the applicant's property, and it's marked in such a way that-
Can you go next to the microphone, please?
And it's marked in such a way so that it's abundantly clear that there is a wetland on the southernmost portion of the boundary, when the description up to this point has been, no, it's not a wetland, it's a buffer. And so that is my, therein lies the core of my question. Is this a wetland, or is this a buffer where we have been talking, what, in the area that we've been talking about for the past two months?
Mr. Schmidt, is there not a wetland area in the, we'll call it the right rear corner of the property? Uh, there is. Is there a buffer, 50-foot buffer off of that? Yes. So there is a buffer and a wetland in the back of the property. That is correct. It may not be the same as shown here, but without the LOI, I don't know if DEP verified the line on Lot 1. They may have only verified for Lot 2. I don't know if this line demarcation as shown on this 10-year-old plan was accepted by DEP without that LOI, which basically tells you what flags they accepted.
We would like to know if that, in fact, is the line of demarcation to the wetland, or whether it's not.
It's not. And we, we-
What I just told you, sir, was that basically without the actual permit, I cannot tell you that.
Can we ask you to do that analysis and then come back to us at a future date?
The answer is, that's a Board decision, sir, and the Board will have to decide whether or not it wants Mr. White's expertise regarding such, or whether the Board will rely on what's been provided to the Board by the applicant and analyzed by Mr. White, subject to what he's about to say.
I mean, basically, we need the permit, that's all we need. It should be on file in the Township. But I will say, the files-
It also is expired.
Expired, and you're right. The permit is going to cite specifically the flags that are on the property in question. That's what they're looking at. Mr. Schmidt, how long is an LOI good for, a letter of interpretation? It's five years. Thank you. Okay. I had sent out an independent wetland investigation, she's been working for me or as a sub for 15 years. She went out there, she did the soil borings, the DEP went out there, they verified that that's the line. In 30 years I've been doing this, the lines do change over time. I've had projects that have sat for 10 years, and the wetlands have increased, and I have done projects where the wetlands have decreased. It's a subjective line, that's not a stick in the mud. It's a vegetation, it's soil type, it can move left or right, and it go either way, positive or negative. What we have on these plans is the most accurate wetland delineation of the property verified by DEP.
Is that why those wetland LOIs are only good for five years, for just that reason?
It is good for five years, and if you have to get an extension for five years, you have to go back out there, re-flag it, and have them go out there, and you'll notice changes again. And you also might even have changes with increase in buffers from 50 to 150. Sometimes it's to your advantage, and sometimes it's not. And I can't say, you think with time's going on, things get stringent, they don't. Sometimes they decide it's estate open waters, which requires no buffer. So it's, you know, it's hit or miss.
So this, this particular application or LOI would be almost 10 years out of date?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions, sir?
I, not a question, I'd just like to make, make some comments. In the-
Mr. Bernstein, do I have to swear again?
No, he's just giving a comment. If he's going to give testimony, we'll see how this goes.
Okay. I have already been sworn in at a previous meeting.
You were, okay, and you're still under oath, and have at it.
Okay. The applicant is asking that, that the environmental impact study, the community impact study, and the traffic impact studies, the three of them, be waived. The community immediately adjacent to this property objects to that. We would like to see these studies. Now, one of the reasons, let's focus in on just the traffic impact study, and let's go back to meetings. And so what we heard is that trucks that were similar to FedEx trucks would be going to the property, and that's what the equipment would be loaded in. And that's not the case. They're much larger than that. They're box trucks, and we have, we have pictures unfortunately that we're taking- They're box trucks, and we have, we have pictures unfortunately that we're taking, and we only have them on, on cellphone right now, and is that something that we can make admissible? And what I'm getting at is...
Unless we keep the cellphone.
Well, can we, can we send...
Can we just, let's, can we just sort out the pictures and just get to your, what your point would be?
The point that I'm trying to make is, in our opinion, going back to the beginning of September, the applicant, to us it's abundantly clear, was trying to push this through very, 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 very quickly, try to get board approval, and it's not as simple as it would appear. We, the community, believe that all of these studies are necessary before you make a decision. We, the people, believe, it is our opinion, that you've got to get something in writing from the NJDEP before the board makes any decisions, and that's our point. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? You know the drill.
Steven Zacharko, Z-A-C-H-A-R-K-O, 1324 Gress Street. Just following up on something Mr. Riley had mentioned, on the report from the DEP, Hillsborough DEP, to this board, there's one, I...will this be part of the application for the flood hazard to the state?
Will the application...
The report?
Report?
From the Hillsborough.
Yes.
Okay. There are two bullet points on the...
Hold on, I'll say it. Always, it's back up.
What, are you asking...
There's no reason for that, the environmental commission's report to go to DEP.
Was that what you're asking, if they were probably...no, I thought you meant like, will the, the state's permit be part of the application?
No, no. What I'm asking is that the report from the Hillsborough DEP...
Hillsborough Environmental Commission.
Environmental Commission.
I'm sorry, the Environmental Commission. Will that be part of the application that the applicant puts in for the flood hazard?
I don't believe they require it.
It's not part of the submission, it's required by DEP.
It's not required?
Not required, sir.
Okay.
No exceptions required, but not that.
Just so that you know, if everyone has a copy of this, the two bullet points, the first one stating, there is a waterway feature between the Raritan River and the site...
We just, we just talked about that.
Mr. Zacharko?
I know, but we...
No, no, no. Let me finish, because...
Okay, sure.
There's a reason why we have a record, because in case somebody's not happy with the way this goes, I end up having to produce this to a member of the judiciary. If you're going to quote something, you need to start from the beginning, because if you don't start from the beginning, you leave an incomplete record. So if you'd like to have the board, the state to the board, the two bullet points in that report, you need to start with the, with the words, "upon opening," and read the whole thing for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Upon opening up the meeting to the public for comment, the following was noted, and I'm referring only to the first bullet point. There is a waterway feature between the Raritan River and the site.
Stream swale or ditch?
I saw, sorry.
In parentheses.
Yeah. The comments that were made at the environmental meeting two weeks ago indicated that there is a stream swale or switch south of the, of the property line. That is what was the comments that were made.
Same thing. Well, the Raritan River is, nope.
And that's all I have to say.
So it's, if it's south of the property line, it's off the property then? Just for clarification's sake, I want to make sure I understand.
Is that what you're saying?
You saw the, the...
I'm just looking at the plan, it's south.
Yes, but the, but the comments that were made were referring to that particular swale, ditch or switch, uh, stream. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to close, public?
Sub move.
Second? One favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I take about 90 seconds with Mr. White to get a question answered that I don't want to ask on the record just yet?
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll reconvene in five minutes at quarter after.
You need to pass around your gift.
Is there any kind of like, like food or any...
Very similar for the application. I think it, verify this.
No, I'm just wondering, because we're on...
Mr. Chairman?
For record, it's quarter after eight, we're back in session. Mr. Counselor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the comments of the public, I inquired from Mr. White whether or not we had had a recent chance to review, and did we have for the record a DEP LOI. It is my understanding that such is in the record. It is dated February 11th or February 16th, 2016. I've asked Mr. White to review it, and I believe he'd like to make some statements for the record.
Basically, it was signed by Tina Wolf, Environmental Specialist Number 3, and she was confirming that wetland flags WA-1 through WA-5 were approved.
Can you speak into the mic?
And there's a 50-foot buffer off these wetlands. She was approving the five wetland flags WA-1 through 5, and that there's a 50-foot buffer off of those flags. And looking at the plan, there are five points on the wetland line, WA-1 through 5, concurrent with this approval. So the board, it was submitted as part of the application originally.
So therefore, the plan is up to date with the most current LOI?
Correct.
And that was dated what, sir, again?
February 16th, 2016.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. So we have an application, the most current application in front of us. Is there any other questions that we have before we go into the board, based on this on the board, Mr. White, or anything like that?
Mr. Sullivan, for the purpose of the record, you are, you are in receipt of the November 8th, 2016, Environmental Commission.
Yes, I am.
And your client agrees to the various comments in the, in the report relative to the, both the proposed changes, and the noting in the middle of it, starting with the pole barn is allowed in the flood, the four items, when the lights will go off, what the impervious coverage is, that the application will be submitted for NJDEP flood hazard, FHA permit is required by the Flood Hazard Area Control Act. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the applicant will agree to all of those items, as well as the changes that note, that are noted at the top of the report?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. So there was a request brought up by the public based on the testimony given, and part of the requests for not waiving the environmental impact statements, community impact statements, and traffic study impact statements. I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, we addressed most of that in testimony in the meetings as to why you did not felt that was needed. Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Mr. Schmidt can reiterate if you would...
Maybe for, just for, for the record, you might want to reiterate why that you wanted to waive on that, based...
Well, the community...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Be a rock star.
Uh, the community impact statement, we don't believe is necessary as its population impact, which we are not really increasing the population. We're not increasing the school impact, it's a office. I mean, I'm looking at Item E, Community Impact Statement from your ordinance, what are the punch choices that I need to go by? And the ones that are affecting us are population impact, school impact, the applicant should submit analysis prepared to the Township Superintendent of Schools, which I don't think is applicable. The applicant may submit an analysis prepared by competent professionals. The applicant shall provide proof, a copy of the analysis has been served by the Board of Education. Again, this is all about schools and, and, um, impact in the school system, so I don't see that as applicable. And then the financial impact, the applicant shall provide analysis of the revenue expected to generate from the development proposed compared to the anticipated, which is Item C, which I also don't think is, is applicable, so I don't see why we need to do a community impact statement. And then you go to Chapter 160, Environmental Impact Statement, Section 160-3 applicable provisions. Exemptions from this chapter are listed below. Severe critical areas, steep slopes, which we don't have. The floodway area is depicted on the plan, so we are showing it, and the critical area of season hot water table, which we, we don't have. So I don't see why we need to prepare a environmental impact statement on such a small project that, which I believe the Environmental Commission, if they thought strongly that we needed it, that we would have provided it. We have an LOI, we submit it to all the outside agencies, and this is an existing site. We're just trying to put a shed in the backyard. So I don't believe we need an environmental impact statement. And as far as traffic impact statement, Mr. Levonitis has pointed out that there's going to be two people that are going to run the office, so that traffic flow is minimal. He might come and go maybe two, twice or three times during the day, and his staff will leave for lunch, so the trip generation from, from the office standpoint is, is very small. And then you have the workers coming in the morning and, and returning at the evening. Again, that's a very small trip count that doesn't really justify having to do a traffic impact statement. Again, this is an existing site. If, if he didn't propose to put a pole barn up, he could open up these, the doors tomorrow. I mean, he has permits to renovate or do the interior work and start his business tomorrow without having to do either a community impact statement, environmental impact statement, or a traffic impact statement. I mean, this is all driven by putting a shed in the backyard to store supplies out of the view of the, of the public. And he's going to invest significant money to, as you can see in the exhibit, I'm not sure, the picture that's shown up there of a site that's been vacant. And you leave a site vacant for too long, it, it can cause troubles. You have people vandalizing, you have people going in, and it's not good to leave these buildings vacant. I think it's good for the public that we restore this building, and he gets to utilize it to, to the extent he wants to.
Thank you. Okay. So we have an application in, in front of us with the conditions set by the enclosed traffic area and what Mr. Bernstein's reiterated, for a putting up a barn, pole barn in the back of the property, and all the improvements that need to be done, and the conditions have to be met to get the plan by both the town and the DEP. Is there any other comments or motion?
Close the public, right?
I think we, yeah, we close public. I personally, you know, I'll just say that, I mean, it is an eyesore that we have an application in, to clean it up. It is in the I-zone, so it's not, not changing the application as far as to what the uses in it. It is a relatively light use as far as what would be used for, as far as traffic in and out. It's not going to be a heavy traffic pattern. I understand the pole barn in the back, so we can store things. I think he was able to move it, helped ease some issues that the public had. And it's just my comments. It's been sitting here far too long, and it's nice that we have someone anxious to, to clean it, clean it up and make it a viable property, and maybe not an eyesore for the neighbors as much as it is. But I will provide the board with the opportunity to make a motion to approve this as stated.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve File 16 PB 10 SRV.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beckerena?
Yes.
Ms. Farris?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Yes. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you.
Next up, we be Yanusi Group Incorporated, File 16 PB 11 SRV, TOD of O218 of 17, Block 183, Lot 36.02 and 37. Lot 36.02, formerly known as Lot 36. B, 300 Sunnymead Road, I've been seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, see bulk variances for relief from pre-existing nonconforming conditions for existing Lot 37. Minimum lot area, minimum lot depth, maximum lot coverage, minimum lot, minimum front yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, minimum side yard setback, and existing from providing, I'm sorry, existing from providing a environmental impact statement, community impact statement, traffic impact statement, to permit repairs to the existing building and install a site improvements for office and industrial use. The property in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District EC reviews O7 2516 and O9 2616. We have a Counselor for this application? Have a seat.
Mr. Chairman?
Microphone, microphone.
Sit down, have a seat. Talking to my, sorry about that. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tim McKeown, Attorney for the applicant, Yanusi Group Inc.
Mr. McKeown, for purpose of record, can I spell your last name so we make sure we're...
M-C-K-E-O-W-N.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to give you a general overview of the application tonight. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with various existing nonconformities requiring bulk variances. The applicant is also requesting the following submission waivers, the community impact statement, traffic impact statement, environmental impact statement. We will also address additional waivers that we were requesting during the course of the hearing. We have sent out the appropriate notices. We've submitted our affidavit of publication and affidavit of service to the township. The property that is the subject of this application is a previously developed industrial site consisting of two lots, 36.02 and 36.07 in Block 183. It's been vacant for several years and is in disrepair, and we will show photos of the current condition of the property tonight. The proposal is to make repairs to the existing building and site improvements. The building will contain office space, service space for maintenance and repair of the applicant's vehicles and equipment. The improvements will include dedicated parking in an existing gravel area to the north of the building. Road frontage will be improved to include a landscaped berm and security fencing to the north of the building. And there will be an overall reduction in impervious coverage for the property. The applicant, in its original application, is seeking relief from the following requirements: minimum rear side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, and maximum lot coverage. Additional variances were noted by the township planner based on measurements from the center line of Sunnymead Road to include minimum lot area, minimum lot depth, and minimum front yard. Planner also noted in his review that a consolidation of the two lots would reduce the number of variances from seven to three, leaving minimum front yard, minimum rear yard, and maximum lot coverage. I can represent to the board this evening that the applicant is amenable to consolidating the two lots so as to reduce the number of variances. We intend to show this evening that each of the foregoing applications relate to the specific piece of property that's the subject of the application, that the purposes of the municipal land use law will be advanced by a deviation from the zoning requirements in this instance, that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, that the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment, and that the approvals would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And Mr. Tom Decker is here this evening, our engineer, to address these issues. Mr. Decker will also address the applicant's request for submission waivers, as I mentioned before, of the environmental impact statement, traffic study, and community impact statement. Mr. Decker will also address the design waivers referenced in the planner's report, and address why the applicant should have relief from providing sidewalk along the frontage of the property. However, I can tell the board, or represent to the board this evening... However, I can tell the board, or represent to the board this evening, that in lieu thereof, the applicant is amenable to making an appropriate contribution as suggested in the planner's report. Mr. Decker will also, of course, address the comments from the town's professionals. We have with us here tonight several witnesses. We have Joseph Oliver, Director of Operations at Yanusi Group, Inc., Tom Decker, as I referenced, engineer and planner with Van Cleef Engineering. We also have here tonight Brad Somerville of PT Consultants to address any environmental questions the board may have with respect to the ongoing environmental release remediation at the property. We also have with us here tonight Craig Patterson, a representative from Marathon Engineering and Environmental Services, who is available should the board have any questions regarding wetlands as relates to the property. The documentary evidence that we brought with us tonight includes a copy of the site plan, photos of the current site, as I've mentioned, and a map of the property with respect to locating the airport hazard zone, which was a question raised by the township engineer. So based on the evidence tonight that we intend to submit this evening before the board, we believe that Yanusi Group is entitled to the relief that it requests in its application for preliminary and final major site plan approval, together with the bulk variances, submission waivers, design waivers, and relief from the sidewalk installation requested. Thank you. Before we go any further with any of your testimony, were you privy to the memorandum that Mr. White sent out today dated November 10, 2016, regarding the, and I'll have Mr. White go over that for the record on the cleanup of the site?
Yes, I did see that.
Okay. Mr. White, you want to?
And the reason it only came out today was because we just received on Monday a hard copy of it to review.
Okay.
As you can see, it's a rather lengthy document.
Yes.
Everyone wants to review it. God bless you. Basically, this site is subject to ISRA. Term you should be familiar with with the Glengarry Application, ISRA basically being the Industrial Site Recovery Act. Because of past practices on the site and past uses, I think we need to get clarification with the status of this ISRA. There was no clarification where they were with their requirement, addressing the requirements of the ISRA Act. So I don't know if there's an LSRP that's available tonight to address it or not.
Yes, I believe.
I represent the LSRP.
Yes, Mr. Somerville will address that.
So the LSRP of record is from PT Consultants at this point?
Why don't we have him come on?
Come on up. Just swear him in, please.
Is your ID? Should you tell the truth, to hold the truth, or to reveal the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Your full name spelled and your last name?
Brad Somerville, S.U.M.M.E.R.V.I.L.L.E.
Have a seat. And just, can you state your qualifications, please, for the record?
You can use the mic.
Use that mic right there.
I've been.
It's on.
Sorry. Okay. I've been in environmental consulting for 15 years now. I'm a civil engineer with an emphasis in environmental engineering licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing PT Consultants, my company, and the LSRP who is, will be on the project, Tom Brady.
Okay. You have a degree from which university?
Rowan University.
Okay. Thank you. We'll accept qualifications. Continue.
Yes.
Mr. Summer, uh, Mr. Summer, PT Consultants is currently responsible for administering the environmental remediation of the site?
That's correct.
Okay. And could you provide the board with a summary of remediation activities at the site to date?
Yes. As Mr. White stated, the property is in an active ISRA case based on historic use of the property as a metal manufacturer or metal fabrication facility. The owner of the property has entered, has executed a consent order with the DEP regarding the ISRA case and will comply with all the required, the requirements of the DEP. It is going to be entered through the LSRP program and will be issuing an RAO once remediation actions are completed at the site. Because of the metal fabrication at the site, metals concentrations were detected in the soil, and there was a reported release of oil to the surface in 2012. We performed the site investigation at the property, performing test pits, digging into the soil and collecting soil samples to see what concentrations we encountered. Our detection, we detected metals compounds, mainly aluminum lead, a few others above New Jersey residential direct contact and default impact groundwater soil screening levels. We feel that we need to do further investigation out there because we did not delineate the full impact. They are shallow impacts. We didn't find anything significantly deeper, ran into weather bedrock at the site. There were also a few stockpiles of soil at the site that we collected samples from that had the same sorts of impacts, so most likely they came from the site as well. We're going to recommend removal of that material prior to further action at the site. We also collected groundwater samples at the site. There are four wells located at the property. They were installed prior to the current owner's purchasing of the property. We detected some metals concentrations in the groundwater. We've collected two rounds, and they've been decreasing in the two rounds that we collected. And that's the extent of our investigation to this point. We're recommending additional groundwater sampling to maintain, to determine if groundwater is of a concern at the site. We're also recommending additional test pitting to delineate the full extent of the impacted metals at the site.
So at this point, we're not really, know the true limits of the impacts?
We believe, since it was related to site operations, they stored equipment and metals out on the property. Most likely, it came from the storage of that equipment there. As metals concentrations don't typically travel very well in soil, we believe they're limited to the site, and we don't believe there's any impact offsite due to site operations.
You'd indicate groundwater was also impacted. What depth are we looking at for groundwater?
Groundwater is about 18 feet deep. We don't, there, which is much deeper than the soil's impact that we've seen. Soil's impact extends to about four feet deep.
But the groundwater 18 feet is coming back impacted?
Correct. We believe it's due to sediment in the groundwater. The wells weren't installed very well. They're loaded, they're slow to recharge, and we believe that might be the issue. But again, further investigation of the groundwater is recommended.
As of right now, is it safe to occupy the site?
Yes, it's safe for workers to operate the site. Before it is fully operational, we will be completing a full investigation and determining what remedial actions would be necessary.
I mean, the one portion of the site that I would say was the old laydown area for the manufacturing, isn't there a lot of dust, and aren't those metals in the dust, and couldn't they become airborne possibly?
The samples were collected below the surface. They weren't collected directly at the surface. The surface of the site is, it looks like asphalt millings that would keep dust down. They're not planning on moving a lot of heavy equipment on the surface outside. That would be just for storage of equipment prior to servicing of it.
My understanding is that he was, the applicant is a contractor, site remediation, you talk about big equipment, you're talking about tandems, you're talking about excavators, lowboys, all this, the whole gamut of heavy construction. How is that not going to, you know, affect and create dust when it's riding through that millings, which actually are not a very good base, based on DEP? They don't like exposed millings. Millings should be capped. It's not acceptable material for a parking lot at this point.
That's correct. And once we complete our investigation, we'll provide a recommended remedial action. This is all being done under the supervision of an LSRP.
Right. That's now online, it has been contracted with?
Correct.
And this is with the current owner, not the previous owner, who was the metal fabricator?
Correct.
So the metal fabricator has no skin in the game, shall we say?
Not at this point.
So it's totally your client?
Correct.
And you're still of the mind that dust kicking up while all this heavy equipment coming across there is not a hazard to the employees? Especially when you have a sample from the surface, you're talking about a sample from below the surface, so what's on the surface is one of the biggest concerns?
The asphalt millings. To collect a sample of asphalt millings, you would show, it would be just like collecting a sample of pavement, which would have petroleum products in it as well, and a little misleading since it's all bound in the asphalt itself.
Was the millings put down before or after the metal fabrication use?
That we do not know. We weren't involved in the property when the millings were placed.
That's allowed, Mr. Chairman.
So if the millings need to be capped, they would have to put a conca, blacktopper or something over top of that?
DEP says you can bind it with a binder, which they've never clarified exactly what's acceptable, because there's a water base and an oil base, and typically it's pavement. Or you remove it.
Or you remove it. So if, just to, for the remediation of cleaning up the site, you looking to do that in conjunction with the, with the application or while you're inhabiting the property, or would it all be done before you move in?
That would be the decision of the LSRP and the client. Most likely, it would be completed, the remediation would be completed prior to full operation of the, of the property.
Any questions for this testing?
Just as far as the millings, wouldn't it be much better if those were sealed some way, eliminating, you know, progression of any toxic things going neighbors or anything else?
We're not concerned with vapors at this point. Dust may be a concern if the soil was to be dug up. The remedial actions will most likely involve capping of the site or hotspot removal of metals. At this point, we, we're not going to recommend something until we fully delineate the impact to the site.
How long would it normally take to, for an LSRP to be closed, you know, with all these testings and all that?
I couldn't say, Mr. Chairman. Depends how extensive it gets with the testing.
Does all, that all has to be provided to the DEP, these results?
In the end, the LSRP is acting as the DEP. That's the whole point of the program, is to lighten their load and basically help them out, because there's too many cases that were happening at the time. And he's the professional that, who's licensed online. And basically, they review every couple submissions of yours, and if they find problems, they're going to review all your submissions. And if there's problems with all the submissions, or a good majority of them, you have the ability to pull your license.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have you appeared before the Environmental Commission?
I personally have not, but the, our LSRP has.
Do we, when, and do we have a report from the Environmental Commission on this matter? I don't believe we, I've seen one.
I don't believe I've seen one yet, no.
Yes, there was a, they did appear in front of the Environmental Commission.
Let's see. Uh, yes, sir.
For the record, it's October 12, 2016.
Yeah, October 9th.
Excuse me, October 9, 2016.
There's, the commission has a couple of requests. Do you have that letter that you could address what the requests are? Do you have a copy of that letter?
I don't have a copy of that. I've not received a copy of that.
I'm going to indicate that the commission, this is about halfway through the, through the report. The commission requested that the following: the applicant provide a Phase 1 environmental assessment for the site, determine the need for a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan, which applies to facilities storing more than 1,320 gallons of oil, obtain an LOI from the NJDEP noting the absence of wetlands on the site, provide documentation at the ditch at the rear of the site is not considered a regulated stream, and establish a site walk. Now, this is regarding a meeting that the applicant appeared before the commission back in July. The commission then apparently conducted a site walk. You were, the applicant was again asked to appear before the commission at the September 25 meeting. The commission then asked the applicant to provide a letter concerning potential wetlands and transition areas to the east of the site. The applicant noted a letter was provided to the planning office from Marathon Environmental noting the absence of wetlands and transitions, which has now been submitted, that the application is exempt from compliance with DRCC regulations. There is lead contamination on the soil, of the soil on site, and delineation is continuing. The LSRP for the site noted a remedial investigation will be prepared and submitted to the township, and that they want to review that once it's been submitted. Apparently, there are also polychromatic hydrocarbons have infected on the outside of the building. The septic system will be replaced, and sampling around the septic field has been completed. The commission asked about the concern for potential contamination in the septic field from any floor drains, and the applicant noted that there were no floor drains, which would lead to believe that there's going to be additional input from the Environmental Commission on this before the app, before the board takes final action. I think the concern that's being raised, counsel, from Mr. White and somewhat raised in his comments in his report, is to whether or not this application is actually, for lack of a better phrase, ripe for board consideration at this point. There are a number of outstanding environmental issues just to start, and Bill, correct me anywhere along the way. And your client is asking this board to consider this application with a number of environmental items still outstanding, with what I gather is more the issue of, it will happen as the matter goes along, and the board should simply rely upon the statements of the consultant and possibly other witnesses relative to what will happen after the fact and not before the fact. And as Mr. White alluded to earlier, the board just recently completed a rather extensive application with another industrial site in town, which had only come in for a subdivision line reallocation. You're not in here for a subdivision line reallocation, you're in here for a development plan. So I would be happy to hear either from you or your consultant at the moment, why the board should at this point consider hearing the application until we got, until the engineer and/or the Environmental Commission had received additional environmental material.
I can address some of these comments that you've raised on the, this Environmental Commission letter. We've provided the Phase 1 as requested. The PA acts as a Phase 1, determining the need for a spill prevention, countermeasure, control plan. The plan is for a tank system of 2,000 gallons, is that correct? So therefore, they would need to comply with having an SPCC plan when the tanks are in place. The LOI, we have our expert here to discuss the absence of wetlands at the site.
Well, excuse me, wouldn't we have to bring this in front of the Environmental Commission first? And that's what they're asking for, whether you're addressing it to us or, I appreciate that, but really, this needs to be addressed in front of the commission first, so they have a chance to review it and then get back to us?
And you're somewhat been spared this evening. The Environmental Commission rep is not here. If Mr. Julien was, I suspect he'd be a little more pointed than I am or Mr. White. I would suggest at the moment that you might want to have a conversation with your client for a few minutes offline, and see whether or not it makes sense to provide some of this additional material to the commission, go back before them and see whether or not there are additional issues that need to be addressed before this board starts to deal with an application with significant environmental issues that are before it.
We'll take five minutes to talk to my client.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess. We're back in session, let's record for it's five minutes to nine. There was a brief recess for the Counselor to talk to his clients.
Mr. Chairman, we, we will regroup and obtain the remedial investigation submitted to the Environmental Commission for their review. I'm going to make a request that we hear testimony tonight from the wetlands expert with respect to seeking a waiver of the LOI. We can represent that as the report indicates there are no wetlands on the site, and if the board is so inclined, I would like to present that testimony and seek that waiver.
Bill?
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, does that affect anything as far as with the Environmental Commission?
I think for the purposes, just, I'm assuming you want to call your wetlands expert, because you would like to get him or her in and out and?
Yes. And dispose of that issue.
And be done with that issue. I think for that limited purpose, yes.
Okay. We'll hear that testimony. Mr. Craig Patterson?
Somerville has not, however, been, you know, spared the future.
All right. Please, just tell the mic, sit, have a seat. Well, you have to be sworn in, so please stand, state your name, spell your last, please.
Raise your hand, please. Should you tell the truth, the whole truth, and make the best of the truth to help you out?
I do.
Thank you. State your full name, spell your last.
Craig Patterson, P-A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N.
Okay. Have a seat, grab the mic.
Mr. Patterson, you can use the handheld mic if you'd like.
Mr. Patterson, could you please give the board a brief summary of your credentials?
Okay, I work at Marathon Engineering and Environmental Sciences. I have more than 10 years of experience in the engineering and environmental consulting field, including five years of experience with wetlands and wetlands permitting, and that is my primary responsibility at Marathon Engineering right now. And I have a master's degree in environmental science from Christopher Newport University in Virginia.
All right, we'll accept.
Mr. Patterson, have you appeared before various planning, zoning, or environmental commissions in your capacity?
Um, no.
This is your first?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
It's always the first time.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Mr. Patterson, did you perform a wetlands investigation for Block 183 lots 36.02 and 37?
Yes, I did, August 30th of this year.
Okay, and did you write a report in connection with your investigation?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the report has been submitted to the board. If, if not, I have copies here for, for the board, but I believe Marathon.
You have a copy of that, Bill? You have a copy?
Yes, sir. You might just want to pass the copies out. They may be somewhere in their packets, but I'll be.
You want to mark this counsel?
I will mark. I will mark Mr. Patterson's copy.
My original copy is better.
It should be in the back of your package. I've got one. Kill more trees.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, and given your testimony before the board this evening, would your referring to your report help refresh your recollection?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Could you please give the board a summary of your findings with respect to your investigation regarding the, the subject property?
Okay, I inspected the subject property and the areas immediately adjacent to the subject property, all in accordance with NJDEP rules and regulations. And it was pretty straightforward, no wetlands on the property, and there was no wetland buffers present on the property as well. To make that determination, I looked at vegetative conditions on those areas. There was no plant communities dominated by, by wetland species. Investigated soils in several areas and saw no evidence of hydro soils, and there was no signs of wetlands hydrology, including soil saturation or water sand layers or any other indicators of wetlands hydrology. So it was a pretty, pretty straightforward case. Definitely wouldn't recommend any need for, any further division of land use regulation permitting at this site.
So just in summary, there were, there were no wetlands located on the particular site or buffers?
Correct.
Okay. I'll open it up to questions from the board or from Mr. White?
There's no streams or brooks or anything anywhere near the property, correct?
Correct. I think the nearest stream was several hundred feet south of the subject property.
I'm familiar with the property, just for the record, right? You have a train track to release one side, right? Okay. Any other, any questions from the board? A motion open to public?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for this testimony given? Public? Now's your chance, kids, be a rock star. Okay. Seeing none? Motion to close?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, we are closing testimony related to Mr. Patterson only. It does not close the record for future.
That's correct. Correct. Okay. I think that we'll accept his testimony. Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, the, any idea timeframe that you may be able to potentially come back to this board?
We do plan on being back at the site to complete the test pit investigation next week. We're probably looking at about three weeks from now to have a result and being able to put a report together.
And they would need to go in front of the Environmental Commission first?
Just go in front of the Environmental Commission. Can I suggest, at least for the moment, that the January 5, 2017 meeting, we have a regular meeting after our reorganization, the first Thursday in January, that probably should give you enough time to do your reports and appear before the Environmental Commission?
That's enough?
Yeah, I believe that's enough.
And the time of decision is not until the middle of February, so we have time.
Renote or no?
The recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is that we carry this application for further hearing until January the 5, 2017 at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without further notice.
I would, I would agree with that, it'd be okay, being that I didn't see much public here, but. You did send out the initial notice?
Yes.
And it would be broadcast in public that it was carried, so I think we'll be okay. So we'll carry them till January.
The motion?
Motion to carry?
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Thank you. Second?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We'll call?
Yes, Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Conner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Beccarina.
Yes.
Justice Forrest.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Chairman McFarlane.
Yes. Anything else you want to say, counsel, I can see you.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a ruling tonight on the LOI waiver request?
LOI as far as the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a thoughts on anybody proving that the waiver request on the LOI for wetlands? Being that Neil's not here, being that there was, I know that there's no real water near this site, and I know the site pretty well, it's pretty bone dry, so.
Did you want to just give a copy of this to the Environmental Commission?
I think we should, yeah.
Just let them review.
Let just them review unless they have a question.
Can I suggest that the board grant the waiver request subject to further consideration by the Environmental Commission? I realize you want it all, but this is about as best as you're going to get.
Okay, so we're going to send it to the Environmental Commission, and if they approve it, that's okay.
It's a motion to grant the waiver request, it's subject to further, further comments from the Environmental Commission related to the LOI.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Convince the Environmental Commission, life is fine.
So we all see this view on January the 5th, right? 8th, or was it?
5th.
January the 5th.
After the regular meeting after the reorg.
After the reorg.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, there is no communications nor correspondence on. We do have an application set for December the 1st, which is a continuation of PRISMIC and possibly another application, and we do have two other applications on December the 8th. So if there's anybody who did not review any of them, please contact DeBora or David or Patrick in terms of making sure you've seen it. But we don't have a business meeting scheduled for this month, so the appropriate action is a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Happy